All right, I'll now open the regular council meeting for the Lubbock City Council for October 22nd, 2024. I will now recess the city council into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.071 to consult with and seek the advice of the city's legal counsel, Texas Government Code 551.072 to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, Texas Government Code 551.074 to discuss personnel matters, and Texas Government Code 551.087 regarding economic development. The city council now is recessing at 3:02 PM, and we will return a little bit later. Thank you. All right, the city council is now reconvening from open session at 4:11 PM, and we'll now move on to our ceremonial items. I will now call on Pastor Darlene Hopkins with Shepherd King Lutheran Church to come forward and lead us in our invocation. If everyone would please stand, and after that, we will have our pledges of allegiance.
A reading from Proverbs about the wisdom of God. "I, wisdom, live with prudence, and I attain knowledge in discretion. The fear of the Lord is hatred of evil; pride and arrogance, and the way of evil and perverted speech I hate. I have good advice and sound wisdom; I have insight; I have strength. By me kings reign and rulers decree what is just; by me rulers rule and nobles all who govern rightly. I love those who love me, and those who seek me diligently find me." Let us pray. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but, "What do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen?" Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Remind them that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, our sibling, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out, and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. All these things we ask in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I now invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to be Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Maybe see. And I call to order the city council meeting, and we would take up citizen comments, but I see that we have none for today. Is that correct? Haven't anybody come up late? All right. Always welcome to make citizen comments at this time if you have such, but we ask that you sign up in advance and let us know what you wish to speak to. So if you're watching, or if you're out here today, just know that you always have that opportunity. Also, let you know, one of our council people is not with us today. Our thoughts and prayers are for the recovery of Councilman Gordon Harris of District 2, as he's recovering from some surgery, and we wish him well. I don't know if he's listening to us today or not, but we wish you well, Councilman Harris. All right. We'll now take up item agenda on our agenda number 4.1, the minutes from the regular city council meeting of September 24th and a special city council meeting of September 26th. Thank you. Is there a second? All right. Any changes or anything anybody noted needed to be changed? If not, all in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. Motion is approved on unanimous vote. All right. Now take up item 5, the consent agenda, and item 5.23 has been pulled from the consent agenda, and I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 5.23. Is there such a motion? A motion of second been made. Any discussion? Anyone in opposition to that? If not, all in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. All right. The motion is carried unanimously. So now let's take up item 5.23, and I'm going to call on our human resources director to come forward and provide the staff briefing on this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Council members. We are proposing the approval of a resolution to consider authorizing our renegotiation of our stop-loss contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And the renegotiation of this contract has afforded us a savings of over $800,000. I will take your questions if you have them.
I think, do you have a something to show us? As far as how we're getting these savings? Because that's the reason I pulled this, is just to let our citizens know that we have found, and we're always looking for ways to try to save taxpayer money, and one of those ways that we found this year is in our healthcare benefit costs, and it's a sizable savings this year. So for those who are here or watching, want them to know that we're always looking for those ways to be as productive as possible with their taxpayers' money. So if you don't mind, just sort of walking through this with us quickly.
Certainly. So, the renegotiation with Blue Cross Blue Shield is for the upcoming year, January through December of 2025, and part of that renegotiation allowed us to find some rebates where we could change the rebate and increase the rebate amount for each employee. The rebate that we are receiving in January for, from Blue Cross Blue Shield, is an administrative rebate of $100,000, and that is a one-time rebate that we will receive as well. The per-employee-per-month rebate improvement amount went from $114 per employee to $137, and the majority of the rebate improvements were through our prescription plan. And those were the two that were renegotiated this year. On the renewal process, you will see on here, the total amount is 827,571, which includes all of the items that I have just touched on.
All right. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question.
Certainly.
I think my only question is, first of all, congratulations. That's a big savings.
Thank you.
But I just want to make sure that it is not going to impact our employee benefits at all. So, the stop-loss is actually where we have a claim that is over $700,000. We pay up to that $700,000, and anything over that will be covered through the stop-loss. And so renegotiating this contract actually is a savings for us. Awesome. Okay.
Now, to your point, the savings accrue to the city, and we're not passing any costs on to any of our employees. This is just, we are actually getting a better rebate on our prescription medication. Is that how I understand? About a 20% increase in that amount, and that's the largest part of this, at $100,000 administrative, one time. We won't see that again. But, okay. That's just part of the renegotiation process, and thank you for looking for that money. We'll look for the change in the seat cushions any way we can, and I appreciate all your work, hard work on doing that. And just again, for the purposes of our voters and taxpayers who are watching, we are always looking for ways to be more efficient with your tax dollars. Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, I'll now take up a motion then to approve this resolution 5.23. A second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none, so it's passed unanimously. We'll now move on to our regular agenda. We'll start with item 6.1, consider board appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm now going to call on our city secretary to provide the staff briefing on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. I will just review what's in front of you all today. There are four positions. Currently, the recommendations are to reappoint Brandon Hardaway, the appointment of Tarek Redwan to replace Zach Sawyer, Robert Wood to replace Jordan Wheatley, and Drew Gray to replace Susan Tomlinson. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? All right. Is there a motion? A second. I'm looking for, thank you. Mr. Gashin.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the committee's recommendations to reappoint Mr. Brandon Hardaway and to appoint Tarek Redwan, Robert Wood, and Drew Gray to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Now, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Dr. Wilson. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Martinez Garcia.
Mayor, I have some concerns with the recommendations, and some of those include the fact that we have some deficiencies in other areas of, well, in several areas of our boards and commissions. One is that we do not have boards and advisories that reflect all of our districts. I have a lot of deficiencies when it comes to having District 1 representation. Second is that overall, we have a male population, or folks that have signed or that are serving at a rate of 63.5%, and only 36.5% of the people that have been appointed are women. Next, I have an issue with the ethnic makeup of that, all of our boards and commissions. I know that there's been a lot of effort by the boards and advisories committee that was appointed and has really made a lot of effort to put some names out there. Unfortunately, when it comes time to them being recommended, the council does not always accept those recommendations. And right now, I do not have, I believe, enough folks that represent District 1, and just based on historical issues that we have faced, I think, you know, in the discussion that we have had, we do need to make sure that our boards, especially planning and zoning, have a neighborhood perspective and reflect the needs of all of the city, and not certain segments. The other part is, I do not believe that folks need to be subject matter experts that only reflect, if we're talking about planning and zoning, that only reflect areas of expertise in planning and zoning. It should be a committee that is made up of citizens from all districts, from all over the city.
Do you have a motion to make or an amendment to make?
I do have an amendment. I would like to have the following folks appointed. Abigail Fleishman from District 1, Tarek Redwan, and Robert Wood. Those are my recommendations. I believe that these folks would represent and provide different perspectives and would also reflect all of the areas of concern. Did I handle that inappropriately?
You would just need, you're doing fine. You just need to sit there and eventually make it as a motion to amend, and then get that seconded, and then you'd vote on the motion to amend.
Do you wish to make that as a motion to amend with those three names?
I do. Yes.
Is that, does she need to mention the names, or are we fine?
You've already mentioned the names that you wanted on your slate. Is that correct?
Yes. Once again, I would like to make a motion to amend and to put forward Abigail Fleishman of District 1, Tarek Redwan of District 2, and Robert Wood of District 4.
And would you also want to reappoint the, because there's four that are up for the appointment?
Yes.
Reappoint the current one who's eligible for reappointment?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
And so reappoint Brandon Hardaway?
Brandon Hardaway.
All right. So that's your motion to amend. Is there a second? I will second that motion. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Once again, Mayor, the concern about having subject matter experts in these areas, I'd like to ask Courtney Paz, our city secretary, to remind me, do people actually have to be subject matter experts in any of our boards and commissions? I'm sure there's some, but for this particular board, the only requirement is that you're a citizen of the City of Lubbock. But yes, there are those boards, such as Building Board of Appeals, model codes, where your specific expertise matter is necessary, such as a plumber, electrician, et cetera. The other question that I have, Courtney, we've had so many deficiencies in these areas, and somehow, we keep getting to this point where council is, I mean, we have people sitting in these databases for a very long time, and then we turn around and we're appointing folks that, you know, haven't been recommended by the board, the advisory board, and sometimes we're picking people at the last minute. And I'm not saying that the others aren't, you know, wouldn't be good representatives, but I think my biggest issue is that we have had a lot of deficiencies in District 1, and not having enough folks from our group serving, or from our district serving. And I keep putting names up, and I know that there was another name that I had recommended, but unfortunately, because of the subject matter expert issue, he was not recommended. So I just take issue with that because we, you know, different people have different sets of rules, and I don't appreciate it. I think that we've gotten out of control with this. It seems to continue to be a problem, and I would like to see more folks represented of our city. The other part is that I have been very committed to recruiting people from every district, especially my own, and now to have something like this where, you know, I have requested, originally, I just wanted to have a District 1 representative added to this so that we would have a little bit more balance, especially because our neighborhoods are the neighborhoods that often get targeted and don't have enough folks that are speaking on their behalf. But then it became a little bit more demographic as far as ethnicity and gender, and that really bothered me, and it insulted me. And so for that reason, this is why I'm bringing it to the dais, because I have always strived for us to work collectively, but when our population is not represented in different areas, then I take issue with that. And not only that, but I felt a little attacked in one of the comments that was made, that unfortunately, I can't bring to the dais because of the discussion and where we discussed it. But just for the record, I just want the public to know that we do not have boards and commissions that reflect our city, much like we do not have a city council that does not reflect our city. We are now about 40% Hispanic, and currently, we only have 14.3%, and I bring that up because that was part of the reason that I was berated. And so I think for me, it wasn't originally about this. I just wanted somebody from my district to be represented, and now I'm dealing with this issue, and it really bothers me, and that's why I am a little bit emotional about it, because on this day and time, it disgusts me to see that we have that type of attitude in this community.
Any further discussion? I'll just put my opinion in or two cents on this. My concern is that our districts are not, you can't have perfect representation across districts, but if too many people live in one district on a board or a commission and not enough on another one, when issues come up affecting that particular district, you don't have people there to speak up for how a decision might affect people in that district if you don't live there and you don't know how it affects you. And so that's even on something like planning and zoning, I think it's very important that we make sure that our districts in Lubbock are represented, so those voices are heard with regard to issues that come up, so that people who live in those districts can respond and can give input on those. And a little bit of concern that I have is we already have currently a serving member on, from District 4, and we would be adding two more from District 4. So there would be three people from District 4, and so that does concern me somewhat. These are all good names, all good people. I want expertise on it, but I also want people that represent neighborhoods, and I want those voices from those neighborhoods to be heard. So that's my concern a little bit about how we've handled this and where we might go, and so I will be supporting the amendment. Any further discussion?
I just want to add one more thing, Mayor, and that, you know, we have had to have folks that, because they are the subject matter experts, or sometimes have a conflicting issue, have had to recuse themselves. So even if they're in attendance, it doesn't always, the decision isn't reflected based on that. So I have concerns with that, and then we're dealing with issues with some of these folks that have had attendance issues. So again, I think it's just important that we have some equity in our decisions. I'm disappointed if, with some of the folks that won't be supporting because they know that the city is changing in so many regards, and when we resist change like this, it is a poor reflection on our entire city. So with that, I guess we can call the vote.
All right. So the motion before us is on the amendment to amend and present the names of Brandon Hardaway for reappointment, Tarek Redwan, Robert Wood, and Abigail Fleishman to the Planning and Zoning Commission. All in favor of that? Please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. It fails, I believe, four to two. Is that right? Four to two? Okay. So the city council will now conduct a public hearing on the creation.
Mayor, you still have to take.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. I'm glad everybody else pays attention here. So now we go back to the amendment, the original that's on the floor, which is the three names, or actually, the four names, Brandon Hardaway to be reappointed, Tarek Redwan, Robert Wood, and Drew Gray, two new appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, and we already have the motion and the second on that. So all we do is, any discussion? Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, let it be known by saying no. All right. That passes five to one. Now I can move on, right? Thank you. So we'll move on to item 6.2. We're going to conduct a public hearing on the creation of a public improvement district for Highland Oaks. And as a reminder here, the purpose of this public hearing is to hear from members of the public regarding this agenda item, and while the council may ask questions during the public hearing, the council will not discuss the merits of the agenda item during the public hearing. So I will now open the public hearing for agenda item 6.2 at 4:35 PM, and I will first call on Brianna Brown to provide our staff briefing on this issue. Brianna?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, nice to be with you this afternoon. As the mayor stated, we will be having a public hearing for the creation of the Highland Oaks PID. We've talked about this district a couple of times in previous meetings, but just as a quick reminder, I've got a map of the location of the proposed public improvement district. And before I go any further, I just want to make a note that we are handling this public improvement district a little bit different than we would in the past. Typically, you would also be considering a resolution for creation of this district today, but because of some things we'll talk about later in the presentation, this is only a public hearing today, so you are not taking any action, I'm just hearing from citizens for or against this proposed district. I've listed here a couple of notes from state law regarding the creation of public improvement districts. Just as a reminder, the area has to meet two requirements in the state law to be able to qualify for creation. One of those is that the petition must represent 50% of the taxable real property, so essentially 50% of the owners of property with inside the district, within the district. Once they meet that requirement, then they can have one or both of the following two requirements, which is 50% of property owners of the total value of the district, or 50% of the geographic area within the district. Typically, we receive these petitions from developers before they've started construction, so we really don't go into these details. Highland Oaks is a little bit different, as you know, because it is an established neighborhood. So we did approve their petition at a previous meeting on September 24th, and just as a reminder, their petition was signed by 58.04% of the record taxable property owner, so that meets requirement number one, and then 62.48% of the owners of total appraised value, which meets requirement two. And I did not include it on this slide, but they also had over 50% of item three representation from over 50% of the geographic area. So they actually met all three requirements, but only two are required by state law. We did publish notification of this public hearing in both the Avalanche Journal, and then all of the property owners received notification as well. I'm not going to read this list to you. I'll put this back up when we open the public hearing, or we invite citizens to speak, just so they know what we're talking about. But really, the thing to note here is we are strictly discussing creation of a PID today. We're not really looking at the finances or the projects that are anticipated to be done in this district. You will have the opportunity for a public hearing and also consideration of those things at a later date. A couple of notes about the purpose of this district. As we've talked about before, the primary reason for creation of this PID is to bring City of Lubbock infrastructure specifically related to water out to the homeowners of this district. And so if the pit is created, it will be used to fund that capital project, to extend water infrastructure, and then the pit will also cover the cost of administration of the district over the life of the pit. Again, I'll make the note here that we are only doing a public hearing today. Should we move forward with the creation of this PID, that will be done after the election for annexation on November 5th. So should that annexation pass, then we'll bring back a resolution for creation at a later date. Estimated cost of services for that water infrastructure project is approximately $7.3 million. Again, this is a very preliminary number, as we won't have true opinion of cost until the annexation is approved and the pit is actually created, so that number is subject to change. Based on that number, each property owner can anticipate an estimated assessment per home of $38,353. So this is also a little bit different from what we've done previously. We typically have an assessment rate that's based on property value that gets charged to each. gets charged to each property. In this case, they have essentially taken the total, divided it by the number of homes within the area, and everybody will pay the same cost. I'm going to go back to your public hearing slide. That's the end of my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions for Ms. Brown at this point? I see none. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there anyone wishing to speak now on the creation of this public improvement district? We keep using the word PID, but that's what it stands for, Public Improvement District. If so, please come forward now if you oppose the creation of this public improvement district. I see none. If anyone's here to come forward to speak in favor of this resolution creating this public improvement district, please come forward now. State your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Tim Goble. I'm, live at 550, or 5308 County Road 7550. I'm the HOA Board Secretary for Highland Oaks, and we're here to be in favor of the formation of the PID. We brought some of the residents in favor as well. I wanted to thank the City Council for their time and attention on our petition. We really do appreciate that and all the work from the city management. And, but really, I just wanted to be available to answer any questions you guys may have about all of this that's going on. There's a lot of moving parts, but to see if you guys had any questions.
Are there any questions? Okay.
I want to thank you for the hard work that y'all have done. It has been a great example. I think moving forward, it gives us an idea of what we would have to do. So I think it was, it was some good work, and it's appreciated.
Thank you, thank you. They did a lot of the work, too, there.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all. Well, maybe in a little while, we'll be welcoming you as citizens to Lubbock. Who knows? We'll see how that vote goes. And that election is in November. It's on the ballot right now. As Proposition A, which is really confusing to a lot of people, because we have a Proposition A for our road bond, but since you don't live in the city, you're not voting on that Proposition A. You're voting on the other Proposition A. I've already had some people ask that question of me, confused me. So you'd think they'd give them different numbers. Anyone else wishing to come forward and speak on that? And I do want to, again, commend our city staff for doing a lot of work on this, making sure that this, if it happens, it happens in the right way and without cost to our taxpayers. So, but a benefit to these people in this district. So thank you for all y'all's work on it, presenting it in the way that you did. No one else? All right. I will now close the public hearing on 6.2. And I don't believe, let's see.
You just got to move on.
That's it on that? All right.
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, without objection, we're going to conduct a consolidated public hearing on zoning cases. And the council has already received in their packets the staff reports from the planning development and recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission, excuse me, Planning Department. And as a reminder, the purpose of a public hearing is to hear from the applicant and members of the public. The council may ask questions of the applicant or staff during the public hearing, but no discussion on the merits will be conducted by the council during the public hearing. I'll now open the public hearing for Agenda Items 6.3 through 6.7, and we will hear from Ms. Sager first. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 6.3 is Zone Case 3508. The applicant is 1585 and Frankfurt Discount RV. The request is to rezone property from single-family residential SF2 to light industrial LI. We sent out 36 notifications, receiving three in favor, zero in opposition. This property is located north of 122nd Street, east of Frankfurt Avenue. Here's the response map showing the responses we did receive in favor. In an aerial view of the subject property, the property was developed outside city limits prior to annexation. It currently has a commercial building on it surrounded by other commercial buildings along Frankfurt Avenue and a mix of residential as well. The current zoning is SF2. There is auto-urban commercial and industrial park to the north, light industrial and SF2 to the south, and heavy commercial to the west. The future land use plan designates this property for residential low-density land uses. Here's some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. The future land use map designation is not consistent with the request, but the request is appropriate in this location along a thoroughfare and adjacent to other industrial and commercial zoning. The request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. Frankfurt Avenue is designated as a minor arterial thoroughfare plan. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with unanimous vote. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Dr. Wilson?
I just want to clarify for everybody on our agenda. This says that this project is in District One, but for the record, this is a District Five project, just so everybody can see that.
Thank you. All right. Move on to the next one.
Okay. Item 6.4, Zone Case 3487. This request is from DLC Designs LLC for the children's home of Lubbock. The request is to rezone from low-density residential SF2 to residential estates RE. We sent out 38 notifications, receiving six in favor, zero in opposition. This property is located north of Erskine, east of Idley Road. Here's the response map showing the responses we received in favor. In an aerial view of the subject property, mostly vacant land, there are some commercial and residential uses in the area. The current zoning is low-density residential SF2. A portion of the children's home property is already zoned high-density residential, and there's a mix of industrial uses along Idley Road. The future land use plan designates this area for residential low-density. And here are some photos of the subject area and surrounding. These are graphics provided by the applicant. This shows the proposed location of a new riding stables for the facility. The future land use map designates this area for residential low-density, which is consistent with the request. The request is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and appropriate at the proposed location. It will not change the character of the surrounding development, and it is along east Erskine and Idley Road, which are principal arterials and freeways. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with unanimous vote.
Dr. Wilson?
Real quick clarification, Ms. Sager. You said, what is the property going to be used for?
They're wanting to add some horse-riding stables.
Is that, if it's in the city limits, is that grandfathered in to be able to have livestock on it?
No, that's why they need the residential estate zoning.
I mean, that's, that's what would allow it. So would it always allow livestock? Or, I mean, is it, is that something that would change?
The residential estates district does allow livestock, so it would be permitted. And you do have adjacent residential estate zoning immediately to the east.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And so I guess their intention is to allow horse-riding for their children who are out there, then?
Yes, for their community.
All right. But it's just a small portion of the area they're having rezoned?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Martinez Garcia?
Oh, the folks will know, this is also part of therapy. So it is a very good project that they will be doing. And, you know, there's not a lot out there. So this is definitely creating some opportunities for the children.
Absolutely.
All right, next.
Item 6.5, Zone Case 2565H. This is a request to rezone property from heavy commercial to medium-density residential. We sent out 69 notifications. We did not receive any responses. This property is located south of 58th Street, west of Avenue Q. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. It is currently vacant. There is a fully-developed neighborhood to the west and other commercial uses along Avenue Q. Current zoning is heavy commercial. Low-density SF2 is to the west, with additional commercial along Avenue Q and some high-density residential. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. The future land use map designation for commercial is not consistent with the request for the medium-density residential zoning. However, this zoning will act as a buffer for the single-family SF2 to the west from the Avenue Q South Drive. The zone changes in conformance with the zoning ordinance, and it will be compatible with the surrounding area. The applicant is proposing an apartment complex of single-family units for this property. The proposed zoning location is along Avenue L and Avenue Q South Drive, which are local streets and principal arterial. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with unanimous vote. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? All right. Next item, 6.6.
Item 6.6, Zone Case 1542V. The applicant is Lubbock Smoke Shop LLC for Lubbock Commercial Buildings, Inc. The purpose is a specific use for a smoke shop on property zone neighborhood commercial in C. We sent out 29 notifications, receiving eight in opposition, one of which was outside the 400-foot notification boundary. We received zero responses in favor. Here's a map of the subject property located north of 74th Street, west of Quaker Avenue. Here's the response map showing the properties that responded in opposition, with the exception of the one that was outside the boundary. Aerial view of the subject property, the property currently has a commercial building that is vacant, and it is adjacent to other commercial buildings along Quaker Avenue, with some residential further to the southwest. Current zoning is neighborhood commercial. There is a lot of neighborhood commercial and auto-urban commercial along Quaker, with that one property next door zoned heavy commercial. Here's a view of the subject property and surrounding area. This is a map showing that the smoke shop meets all of the separation requirements in the UDC, both from other smoke shops and uses such as daycares, parks, schools. The proposed specific use is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and appropriate at the proposed location. It's compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. Quaker Avenue is designated as a principal arterial, and 74th is a collector. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with unanimous vote.
Any questions? All right. Let's go to 6.7 then.
6.7 is Zone Case 2651B. The applicant is West Star Commercial Realty for SPSMLTV. The request is to rezone property from industrial park to heavy commercial. We sent out 14 notifications, receiving zero response. This property is located south of 50th, west of Frankfurt. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. It has a existing commercial building on it with several different tenants, surrounded by other commercial uses up and down Frankfurt. Current zoning is industrial park, and is surrounded by industrial park, light industrial, heavy commercial, and then low-density SF2 to the west. Future land use plan designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are some photos of the subject property and surrounding area. The future land use map designation is for commercial land use, which is consistent with the request for heavy commercial. The zone changes in conformance with the zoning ordinance and compatible with the surrounding area. Frankfurt Avenue is designated as a minor arterial. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with unanimous vote. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Sager? All right. I see none. All right. Thank you, Ms. Sager. Now, is there anyone coming forward to speak in opposition to Items 6.3 through 6.7? Any one of those items? Anyone present today to speak in favor of Items 6.3 through 6.7? Any one of them individually or altogether? When you come forward, please state your name and your address, and which one you are speaking to. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Amanda King with DLC, excuse me, with DLC Designs for the Zone Case for the 3487 for the children's home. Our address is 1318 North King. I'm here and available if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? I see none. Anyone else here today to speak in favor or, in favor? Yes.
My name is Galap Hamud. Lives in 4891 F Street, Omaha. I'm representing HMB Management Company that's already operating 219 stores and 19 wholesalers with owner reputation in multiple states, representing the case 1542. If there's any question, I'll be more than happy to answer. Thank you.
Are there any questions? I see none. Anyone else wishing to come forward to speak to any of these items? If not, I will now close the public hearing at 4:55 PM. Is there a motion to approve Item, Agenda Items 6.3 through 6.7? A motion by Ms. Martinez Garcia, and the second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. It has passed unanimously. Having exhausted all items on the agenda this meeting, I'll take them. Yes, sir.
My apologies for the interruption.
You want to do this during the meeting, or just-
Okay, if you don't mind, yes.
Very good. We've got one other item we want to cover.
One item not on the agenda, and the gentleman in the audience, mayor, may not be, is Mayor of City Council, Mr. James Brown, who's sitting on the back row unless he was scheduled. You don't have to come up here. Just stand up. Thank you, sir. James has been your city's information officer for a number of years. I have had the privilege of being with him for two different cities. I think he would say the same, but we're not going to ask him publicly. Mr. Brown is retiring from many decades of public service at the end of this month, so I just wanted a chance to recognize him. This is his last council meeting out of all of those years, and we didn't manage to drag him up to the front. We will have a retirement reception for James next Tuesday, the 29th, at 3 o'clock over at the Terrace Suite at the Lubbock Civic Center. So, Mayor, thank you for the indulgence, and James, thank you for your service. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, James. So, James, that's on the record now. It's on the record that we appreciate your service very much, and we all do. You've looked out for the city and our information technology needs, and I don't think, I understand what half of those are. But I know I'm glad to have had you there, taking care of all that. So with that, we are adjourned. Please turn off your microphones.